I'd like to call this meeting of the planning board. Point with the bylaw review committee to order. So. And it's okay with you, I'd like to go through our meeting minute approval before we jump into your stuff. So roll call vote for the planning board.
Roll call.
Sorry.
Roll call for attendance.
Roll call for attendance, yes. Uh, so for roll call, uh, Theo, no?
Here.
Uh, Matt Spaulding. I'm sorry, yeah, Matt Lowery.
I'm here.
Yep, uh, Kevin.
Here.
Here, and then it looks like, uh, I don't think we have Bill, uh, at this time. Uh, so we do have a quorum, and then Dan, do you have to take a roll call for your?
We do not, at the moment, it appears that we are without a quorum on the bylaw side.
Okay.
But it, that will likely be resolved shortly.
Okay.
We've got, we've currently have six members, so we have three present.
Okay.
Kevin gets to count twice.
For both.
Okay. Or he only gets to vote once. Oh, now we've got a quorum.
There we go, perfect.
Welcome here.
Have a seat.
Have a seat, either side. Just make sure it's at the table.
Okay. Good to see you. How's it going? So in that case, uh, I'd like to do that for us to go to our, uh, approval of the meeting minutes, and then we'll go to, uh, item number three for the, the me of the.
Absolutely.
So for the planning board side, uh, item number two, approval of the November twenty-six, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes, does anyone from the planning board have any? Comments or concerns related to those meeting minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the November twenty-six, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Second.
Oh, motion by Matt, seconded by Kevin, roll call vote, Theo?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And yes to myself. So meeting minutes passed four to nothing. So in that case, item number three, bylaw review committee discussion on revised proposed bylaw by the bylaw review committee. So, uh, Mr. Lieber, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, Mr. Hogan. And with that, we happen to have the esteemed Attorney Bobrovsky with us, who, who's joining us in the room, far end of the table, neutral location. And he's the, the one who has helped us significantly with the recodification as we've gone through this process. For about a year and a half, and the, the. Recodification has undergone a lot of different questions, a lot of different pieces. I know that many members of the planning board are aware of several of the issues that have come up. Nothing at this point is fully baked, so to speak, and ready for full presentation. This is the first time that we're doing a joint presentation with the planning board. This process will continue, and it will come back before the planning board, after it has more input as well. So there may be changes by the time it comes back again. This is a work in process, and the intent here is to get feedback and improvement. We are all working for the benefit of the town in the respective capacities that we have. And in Kevin's situation, he gets to, uh, be on both, both boards, so he gets double, double duty. So it's, it's really important that everyone have an open dialogue. As there are questions, please feel free, ask Attorney Bobrovsky, he's an absolute expert when it comes to understanding. The impacts of various zoning pieces. Very recently, I did, he did send out the latest draft of the ADU, the accessory dwelling unit. Regulations, and that I want redistributing to the town, including planning board and so forth. So and the other boards that deal with real, real property.
Sorry, Matt, if I pause there, you said the ADU that you, you, that language that you distributed, is that a? Template from, or is that just the language from the law that was recently passed, or is that a template that other towns are using as the basis of their ADU bylaws?
So I heard through Dan that there was a group, that you were working on an ADU here at the planning board, I didn't want to step on anybody's toe. So I prepared a tool. I took your A, accessory apartment bylaw, I took the ADU provisions, I circled the crucial pieces in the legislation. No owner occupancy can be required, no special permit can be required, size limitations. And then I looked at yours, and I had a key, you know, number four was, you can't do that, number four in your bylaw, but I didn't put it together.
Okay.
It's ready to go, I just didn't want to step on anybody's toe.
But it's a tool that could be used to pick up, okay. That's super helpful, thank you for, for clarifying.
On the second part of your question, there is no template. I asked, um, Kelly Gunnigan, who's the new municipal unit director at the AG's office, she had something she was circulating. And I had not received a response. Just Friday, I think I received an email from Barbara St. Andre now, uh, I think she's now in. Menden, one of the small towns north of Franklin, she used to be KP. At my first trial against Barbara St. Andre years, thirty-five years ago. Anyway, she circulated a document that's now purring to be the regulations from EO HLC. And everybody's reaction to them that I've seen in the last seventy-two hours is entirely negative, so we'll see how that bears up. I, I don't know that, we're spending an awful lot of time on ADUs at the state local level. When I don't think it really is going to produce more than, certainly not more than five percent, and I doubt two percent of affordable units in Massachusetts. So we've had this debate before, it's been going ongoing, it's been ongoing for thirty-five, forty years. Who's going to tear apart their house, twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand dollars worth of refurb?
I know that Ms. Elliot has a, has her hand up as well.
Yeah, just really quick, the state passed, excuse me, um, sorry, I'm, I'm sick, but the state had passed, um, around, or emailed around the, um. Draft regulations from EO HLC that just came out on Friday. They are not finalized, they're looking for comment between now, and I believe the cutoff is something like January tenth. I will be working to forward those, it was something I was going to talk about later tonight. But as of right now, I have started having meetings with other entities on the ADU regulations. So whatever we do put forward really needs to take into consideration what the other department heads have been dealing with in the different components. Which are not included in the current regulations, and there are components that weren't addressed under the, the current bylaw. For accessory apartments, and yes, there's a lot of components we need to, to dress, um, through this. So, uh, I just wanted to, to point that out, that the, the state has released draft regulations. And those were just released at the end of, of last week, um, and I'm, again, happy to forward those, uh, but we can talk about that more in detail later.
Yep, sounds good. So in that case, uh, Dan, you know, you're, you're teeing up in terms of the, uh, the, where we stand in terms of the process, sorry to sidetrack us on the ADU. But, uh, thank you for the clarification of where we stand in terms of that effort.
Absolutely, and this is where Attorney Bobrovsky does have the ability to provide guidance. We do have the benefit that built into the contract with the town. Does allow for these types of additional pieces with Attorney Bobrovsky, it doesn't require a separate, a, a separate letter or anything that's actually built into the contract and the budget. So to, for the planning board to get that expertise. It will be very valuable, and timing wise, if it's going to be concurrent with the recodification, it makes sense to have all of that handled in a way that's consistent. So that way we can literally get it done by the person who wrote the book on zoning.
Well, I hope Kelly gives us some guidance too, that would be useful. Cause I, I, pretty simple and straightforward. I've done one, I did Holden's the other day. Uh, because I'm recodifying that town's bylaw as well. I, I think I'm going to send it to Kelly, ask her what she thinks, that's my usual way of getting their support, so we'll try that. But I, I do understand from Holden's planner that the ADU stuff is due in February.
Yeah, invalidates your, the zoning that it is in conflict with by February, so not a lot of time if they're looking for comments by January tenth. And Sam, I see your hands raised again.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm it as, um, technically you're supposed to have the, uh, a minimum, the definition updated, preferably the whole bylaw updated, um, by the hundred and eighty day mark, which is the February. Deadline that, um, y'all were referring to, uh, but as I've talked to the town administrator and talked to the planning board, at this point, the goal is to get. The right, um, components together and have time to actually look over it, um, versus just trying to rush something in. That would have been at a, I, I guess at this point, you would have tried to have done a special town meeting because it has to go through town meeting. But I don't know that we would even had enough time to be able to do that, so we're doing the best we can to get all these things together with, um, MBTA being such a, a large undertaking, um, with taking up so much of my time. But I know that, uh, once EDUs goes through, um, there have been a number of different people reaching out to me that are very anxious. So I want to encourage us to try to stick to that spring timeline so that there isn't too much of a gap, if there are components that we do want to. Have a little more oversight over such as prohibiting short-term rental use, um, because if that's. You know, if there's a little bit of a gap in that, that's something that could potentially happen. Um, I know I have had some people reach out too, who have, um, disabled children, who have, um, a strong desire to be able to add these units. Whether they're attached or detached, I don't know, but they've, I, again, I've already had people reach out. So trying to get, to, to get to that February deadline, so I do want to try to, um, let you all know as well that I did talk to, um, Mr. Mayo, the town administrator. And we do need to try to, um, have something ready to go in February, so I've already talked to Bill. A little bit about, um, the timelines and started putting together some different components, and I'm happy to coordinate with the, um, bylaw review committee once we have a little bit more, um, of a guideline. And I've, again, been in various different meetings and webinars, um, I have a bunch of different templates to start pulling things off, as well as my prior experience, having worked with, um, municipalities that have garage departments. And overlay districts, so I'm, I'm happy to, to work on helping to put that together as well.
So, um, I'm going to try to take us back out of the ADU hole that we've seemed to have fallen into, so thank you all for the great information, but, um, so Dan, just teeing us up where we turn, kind of. Stand from a ten thousand foot view, we've gone through, it sounds like about five, six revisions of the bylaw review for the recodification. Can you just kind of outline us from where you are right now to where you think you're going to be going to town meeting, and then where we and the planning board can help? You know, provide feedback as, as appropriate.
Sure, so, and, and I'll, this, this will be done in about ninety seconds, yeah. So the, we've gone through a process to identify what the core elements are of the recodification, we've worked closely with Attorney Bobrovsky to do that. And we've taken a look at several different drafts, we're currently at what's labeled draft six, three and four, we never received, those were internal drafts. But everything is posted to the bylaw review committee's website, anyone's able to look at that at any point. And see the, the various pieces in the each draft, if they want to see the, the changes and follow them through. But the latest draft is draft six, and there have been different pieces, a lot of this comes through feedback from members of the public that have various interests. The goal is to have as good a bylaw as possible. That accomplishes the goals of the town as it is today. Without changing the substance, the, the core substance and meaning of the original intent of most of the bylaw. So there are a lot of changes to it, and some of those changes are significant in their impacts. But the reason for is usually compliance with current law. It, it's the, the changes have been, have not kept up with the, with the laws. And in other cases, there have been other components that other towns have gained advantage of. That we will have the flexibility through the judicial boards, such as planning board and board of appeals, to potentially improve the town. It doesn't mandate that there will be any sort of new building, it doesn't in- increase the mass or the size or anything along those lines. It does not make any changes to mapping districts, those have all been kept out of scope of recodification, those are substantive changes. They really belong at boards such as the planning board to make those changes. But in terms of the language itself and with the organization, the existing chapter one ninety bylaw is haphazard. And this takes and puts all of the definitions together, it puts different pieces together. So where, what we've had has grown up over the last forty years or so. Will actually have something that's much easier to digest and understand as a layperson, as a homeowner. And for those who are attorneys, for them to understand as well. And thankfully, we've gotten the input from several people in the property industry, is that a, a fair characterization?
Sure.
With, with that, Attorney Bobrovsky, if you want to take us through where we are and any questions, so the planning board can give their opinion as well.
Can you put us up on the screen?
If you, if you can. List us as, as co-hosts, then we'll have the ability to do that.
Okay.
Give me for a second.
You want to use my computer, or I'm not connected to the internet right now. I can do a.
And you are now co-host?
Okay.
And then as you're doing that, so I know, is the intent right now that you're looking at potentially a? Twen- spring twenty-five?
Spring twenty-five.
Okay.
In terms of timing, we're having this meeting in January, we're meeting with the zoning board of appeals, town council. And, and to get their input as well, we expect that realistically, probably in the February timeframe, late February is our expectation, maybe March. It will be ready as a warrant article. To be referred to the town council, to then be referred back to the planning board. Because of the required hearings, so that way you'll get a second bite at the apple, so to speak. And at that point, it's a warrant article, it's not in final form, because things during those public hearings may result. In additional changes, and then it will get presented at spring town meeting. There will, are likely to be other elements that, of the recodification that are auxiliary, that may be separate warrant articles, such as ADUs and so forth. That, that's to be planned as well.
If I could just say something, if, the sooner you get it to us, the, the better, so we. Because of the posting, obviously, the posting period, there's a delay of when we can actually. Have public hearings, and we want to make sure that we have the ability to have at least two. Fortunately, sometimes we don't get that opportunity, and it, it's not a good look to town meeting with people not being able to comment on it. And the, the other issue is once. Once the warrant is posted and we have a public hearing, any changes that may come of that. Would have to be floor changes at town meeting, which you know can be very difficult, so.
The, the article wa- isn't going to include the language of the entirety of the bylaws. So the article language will probably be much shorter, so the, the information that will get presented for preparation of the, of the, uh, actual bylaw itself. That, that's what, when it gets locked down. It's not when it gets submitted originally to town, to town meeting, because what gets presented.
Gets locked down as soon as the warrant is finalized.
Right, once the warrant is finalized, but until that point, changes can be made, so.
I think Matt's point is that we want to make sure that we have public meetings before the warrant is finalized, because if you, if we have a, we have to have a public meeting. Prior to town meeting, but if we have it between when the warrant is finalized and town meeting, then any changes that may come from the public review process would be a floor change, and that's. Not desirable.
We have to have the public hearing afterwards posted, so it basically has to be in its final form. Before we have a public hearing.
A couple, a couple of points, number one, I, I've done more than a hundred of these, so I'm well used to the stampede that can occur if you don't have it all squared away by the time. Town meeting rolls around. Secondly, this is the sixth draft, and I have now given it to my former office manager who quit on me last year. But she and I had a great relationship for fifteen years where she would take, you know, roughly the third, fourth, fifth draft, and then it wasn't worth it to do it before that. And then I gave it to her, and she's just a stickler for formatting, typos, spelling, she's, her fingerprints are all over this now, so it's very close. I'm sure there are going to be some changes, and I look forward to discussing it with you tonight. In, in terms of a meeting like this, what I would ask is that your best note taker, join me in taking notes. So that when I get back home and I need to figure out what we did and where we are, there are two, two sets of eyes on it. Number two. It's difficult for me to figure out where to go with some of your comments. I'm working with the town of Norton, there are some people on their planning board who are very opinionated, and they go off like rocket ships, and am I going to put that in or not? It's not, I, it's the planning board's call, they're the committee there, instead of the bylaw committee. So I usually conspire with the planner to, uh, have some sort of an internal process after I'm gone. Where we get the notes, we type them up, we circulate them, and then board, in a moment where there's a, some time at a regular meeting says, yeah, do this, but don't do that. And I'll let you fight it out amongst yourselves on a, you know, internecine warfare here, that's your business, not mine. So that's kind of what I would like to come up with tonight, is a master list of things that you've proposed. If it's easy, if there's a typo, just tell me and I'll fix it, it's up on my screen. But if it's something that requires a debate, then I think we need to make a note of it, put it up in an email. I just, we just did this, Dan, with the first round at the emergency or the, uh, the public safety building, and those changes are now, for the most part, in this draft, so.
Excellent, so if you want, I.
Yeah, I mean.
Happy to, sure.
Right, and, but sorry, one more thing before we dive into the body of this, the other question is that, I'm assuming for the purposes of. This recodification that we're doing, the recently passed MBTA three A is excluded, and that is a, a standalone?
Attorney General. It's a waiting attorney general.
Correct, but that's not currently baked into this, because it's, it has not been finalized with the AG, correct?
Right, but the self-storage, has that gone through the AG?
That has.
Has?
Yes.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
That's the last thing.
Okay.
So I'm going to walk you through pretty quickly, and if, we'll do it section by section, I'll tell you what I've changed, if you have any questions, then shout them out. When, when I see no more questions on section, I'll move on to section two. Um, section one's down and dirty, this is the handshake of the bylaw, it basically tells you. Uh, how to interpret this bylaw in light of the fact that there's a couple of other bylaws or, or operating regulations out there. Uh, I think I changed some of the stock language that you had before, because it was a generation older than it needed to be. There were no citations, I don't think, to the home rule amendment or, uh, things of that sort, so.
As we're going through this, when it's highlighted, is that because there's an open question, or is that because of some other?
There shouldn't, I fixed those two highlights already, there shouldn't be any other yellow in this. If there's a question, it, it'll be usually in the form of a, a new comment in the margin, and there may be a few in here, I don't remember, because it was ten days ago. But that's sort of the way this works, so there's, there's nothing controversial in here. You wanted me to keep the fees in for the board of appeals, I originally had said, let's take these out, they don't belong in the bylaw, you're going to have to go to town meeting, change the fee. And the response was, well, at least we know where the fees are, so it's fine with me, I put them back in. Section two on districts, I don't think. We eliminated a, a couple of references to MR, didn't we?
There, there are a couple of changes, there were some districts that were not used.
Right.
And the most significant substantive change was the collapsing of the. And, and, and re-characterization of what was the assisted living district.
Yeah.
Senior housing.
Yeah. So there.
Dan, I can. I can add, because I'm doing the minutes to the, the lost meeting we had on June twenty-seventh, I'm doing those today. We took out MR one in, in MR two districts.
Right.
As nothing was zoned in the town.
Yeah, and I'm looking at your old table, and that, those two columns that I had put into the new, uh, news table. Were subsequent, about three drafts in, they were deleted. And then if you look down a little bit, you'll see that there's, um, some references to the overlay districts that I added. And. There's, uh, no longer any reference to the assisted living overlay districts, there's a new reference to the self-storage facility overlay district. I think that's, I think that the floodplain overlay district changed, but that's because FEMA gave you a new template to work off of. Pretty common everywhere. I've kept the same reference to the map, I, there's a couple of districts that don't have maps. And they're noted relatively.
Creative development in number six.
Yeah.
I notice it. And, and that is because it, it, what hasn't been one that we have been able to identify that was accepted by town meeting.
I really like your creative district, uh, creative development district, uh, model. I think it could be more. Elaborate in terms of trying to, it's, it's, it's really a party invitation. You got a great idea, bring it down, we'll think about it, if we like it, we'll go forward, we'll put an article together, we'll go to town meeting. And we'll see what we can make out of it. That's a model that's worked up and down one twenty-eight now for a generation. Hartwell Avenue in Lexington on the west side of one twenty-eight, just as you round that corner from. Two twenty-five down to two A, that whole stretch of Hartwell Avenue is Lexington, and that's at least ten. Plan development districts, creative development districts, but each, each of those projects is its own district, brought to town meeting as a standalone. And Lexington's had a really successful run with it, Burlington just before that, every.
Conceptually, is this similar to like, uh, a planned urban district, or?
I'm not telling you, and you're not telling them what to do. In planned unit development is the earliest, you know, PUD was the earliest model. But a PUD said you had to have residential, you had to have, uh, office, and you had to have retail. What if I don't want to do that? It's a useless bylaw to me, instead, I'm asking you to tell me what you want to do. Probably the best example on one twenty-eight is the intergenerational campus of the town of Denham. Senior Hebrew living, uh, moved the Rashi school in. There's an assisted living facility, a, a long-term care facility, a childcare center, the Rashi school, which I think stops at eighth grade. And that's all an idea that they made up, and what a fascinating project it was, it's there today. It's amazing, it's a hundred acres, about ninety acres of open space, but the rules were just simply made up because Hebrew senior living out of vision. And what book in Massachusetts has intergenerational campus in its use table? Forget it, it's not going to happen. So that's the kind of creativity that the, that the creative development district could invite. I, I just did Haverhill and Medford in the last five years or so. The minute I walked out the door in Haverhill, they had their first two or three of them, we call it planned development district in Haverhill. But there was an old banquet facility on the Bradford side of the river, the family didn't want to run it anymore. Princeton Properties came in, there's a couple of hundred units in there with a very small.
So if I'm reading this right, we have a district, but we don't have a map that.
No, I don't think you have a creative overlay district.
All right, because it, and is there one map that shows everything, or?
No, there's a big zoning map that shows the underlying, and then each of these individual maps referenced in this section relate to one of the overlay districts.
All right.
And they are available, you can find them online, I have a collection of them in here, but there's no creative. Development district, because I don't think any, there's ever been a vote to establish one. So there isn't currently anything zoned, creative overlay district, there's text, and there's nothing wrong with that, to have text in the bylaw, awaiting a map change that would put it on the map. The rest of these are all on the map. But my only thought about creative development was that. I, I think I showed the committee Haverhills, but it's, you know, it goes ten, twelve pages. And the creative development now is pretty concise and short, but if I had that in my bylaw, I'd want to wave a flag and say, you know, take a look at this.
Matt McGrath has his hand up. Someone showing. Mr. McGrath, do you have your hand up?
I, I do, I just had a comment on that, if I may.
Yes, please.
Mark, if you could just scroll back to that. I'm just wondering, um, should it even, should it even be referenced as being a map when it really doesn't exist yet? Should just be taken out of there, or should it, instead of having a date, should it say, as may be created? Pursuant to whatever the section is on creative overlay districts?
Those are good points, um, and I think, given that there is no mapped area yet as creative development. Rather than leave a blank, I, I think we probably could change that entry number six there to say, it's, uh. Is section six, what is it, eight, section nine point something of the bylaw. The text is, uh, available for consideration of somebody who wants to put some map change together, you know, just make it into more of an invitation, so.
I'm sure, I, I'm sure you'll come up with appropriate language, I think that it might just be better to have an undated line.
Yeah.
It just, no one's looking for something that doesn't exist. It just, no one's looking for something that doesn't exist.
I, I had a, I had a case recently in Lakeville where they, they created something called the development something, the development overlay district or something like that. And there was a, the vote was 59 to 12 at the 2012 town meeting. There was only, the, the map didn't show the development overlay district. It was intended that any 25 acre parcel would qualify. And that, that somebody could come forward and say, I want to do, you know, whatever they wanted to do. But the confusion was that some of the voters thought that they were voting in the text that night, and they would come back at a subsequent town meeting to pick the 25 acre parcels. My client argued that instead it was a townwide overlay district, so it didn't need to have a map amendment. And any 25 acre parcel, whether in existence at that time in 2012 or assembled thereafter, was an eligible parcel. And the land court and the appeals court ruled against my client. And I thought that was, you know, not, not a great decision, but because who puts a, 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 a text version of a bylaw out? Well, you do, without it being mapped. You're the only one I know in 40 years of doing this.
I, I like more prescriptive or inviting language for that, too.
I'll fix it.
Because I think we could get good ideas that people don't even know that this is a possibility right now.
Yeah.
Make it so it's, it's, put the onus on an applicant to create said map.
Yeah. Yeah, because the map would be part of the idea where it's located.
Yeah. Because I think, but by inference, the, the intent would be that this would be applicable to any assemblage of land within the town as currently constitutes, and then the map assemblage would be created by whoever would be the proponent. Because it has to go to town meeting anyway, similar to any other zoning bylaw amendment. But to your point, that would create, that would preclude the ability, or the need to go to town meeting twice for the same thing, which I think doesn't make any sense.
Any use allowed in at least one of the districts under a creative development overlay is allowed at any location throughout the creative overlay, including the underlying districts. And then there's some lot area requirements. Which I don't, don't look intimidating at all. Some height limitations. Parking standards. Some affordability standards if it's a mixed use. This is all in section 9.7.
Advance to 190-7?
No, I think that's just pretty, we'll, we'll get there eventually, but it's pretty straightforward after that. Site plan approval is required.
And that site plan approval, is that by the planning board or the ZBA? Or is it the combination, or, you know, the applicant can choose, similar to the way it works in the other sections of the bylaw?
Hang on, I blew by it here. Concept plan to the planning board. Planning board requires site plan review by the planning board. That's in section 97.10.
Do you want to go back to?
Yeah, there's, I think the first two sections are pretty boilerplate and straightforward, other than the keeping track of what we deleted. Let me just talk a little bit about the assisted living overlay district. I discussed well, first of all, it should jump out at you that assisted living is only one facet of senior care. It's not the whole game. So there are also considerations to be made for independent living, which I, you know, kind of the junior varsity getting ready to move into assisted living. And then at the fire end of it, the long-term care skilled nursing, as it's called. And then ultimately continuing care retirement communities, which is CCRC. There's a separate statute for CCRCs. The difference between a CCRC and freestanding assisted living is that when you, uh, sign a contract with a CCRC, your, um, contract is usually for life, so you're aging in place at the same facility. Not always, but there is a contract for more than a lease for a year. Uh, that's the key difference. So assisted living, uh, if you run out of money, there's no continuing obligation under contract that you get to stay there at the Medicaid price, which doesn't cover the bill usually, a, a facility like that.
Where is that, where is that one established? I'm looking at the, the section six of the.
So senior housing, I believe, is in section eight.
Is there not a map associated with that?
No, it's not a district, it's a thing.
It's, it's.
Gotcha.
It's a use.
A use case, okay.
Correct. It's in the use table, and it's allowed as per the use table. But those are the things that are components of something that could be soup to nuts, age and place. Or it could, I have clients who just do freestanding independent living facilities, usually on Cape Cod. And I have clients who do freestanding assisted living facilities, but they don't do long-term care. They don't, it's just all assisted living.
I'm just going to jump ahead to those sections.
I have it in the yeah, 8.4. So I'm hyper-conscious of this. I, two parents lost in the last seven years, but they went through every level of this, from independent through assisted, through memory care, long-term care. I said to my mother, what's the difference between long-term care skilled nursing and assisted living? And she said, well, when you ring the bell in assisted living, they come in five minutes. When you ring it in long-term care skilled nursing, they come in five hours.
And I think what you're saying is that the, the language that's currently in here is more broad than what, which that was previously
Just with assisted.
To pick up all those nuances.
And there's different licenses for all of these, so you, you hit one, you don't hit the others. And then I tried to make some room in the definitions for continuing call, I, a continuing care facility would be all of these things, or, or some components of this, but it'd be a blend. And the key difference between that and the standalones is the contract. It's a chapter 93, section 58, I think. That says you want to be, there's only about 40 CCRCs in the state. If you Google continuing care retirement communities, you'll see them across the board. I represent, uh, the, uh, one in Concord called, uh, Beaconis.
I just want to add in that anything that's done under this use does require approval through the ZBA. So it's not a, a by right without any sort of town intervention, and that's significant. So it, it's a use that is granted by a special permit.
And I see that in your, that you, you have all your definitions back in section 11. Senior housing facility has all those, all those listed out. What they specifically relate to, and where they, where applicable, they reference mass general law, CMRs, etc.
I, I don't want to predict what kind of operating plan a facility like this would have standalone. I mean, for example, when my parents moved out of their single-family house in Florida on the marathon bombing weekend, that's a short little period of time it was. They moved to an independent living facility in Cary, North Carolina. And it was purely independent living. There was a communal dining facility, you swiped the ticket if you didn't want to cook that night. There were common amenities, hair salon, swimming pools, classes. But if you, if you ultimately devolved into needing care, assisted with activities of daily life, which is what separates you from assisted living, you had to bring it in. It wasn't something that they supplied. And then eventually, if you got to the point where you needed it more permanently, you thought about moving to an assisted living facility, and that's what they did. They moved to a, a place called Glen Air, which is a church-run facility in the same town. And they were there pretty much for the rest of their lives. But that was a CCRC. So it carried them through these different levels. And I'm not trying to be predictive either. You'll, you'll see there's no formula here. How many units you can have per 3,500 square feet of lot area? This is largely Andovers that you're looking at, the section 8.4. I've modified it. I represented Capital Senior Housing in Andover when they put in 100 bed assisted living facility. And I found the bylaw was fair and, and easy to work with. The boards were smart, they got it, they didn't fall for any tricks. Everything was proportional. It, it ended up with, as a very good project. It's on Elm Street in Andover, if you want to take a look at it. And I'm not a big fan of formulas. They, they don't. Sometimes assisted living facilities are shoehorned onto a more urban lot. One of my clients has a model that, that works at that level. And sometimes they're campus with seven acres on Elm Street in Andover. There isn't one right answer and one, and the rest are wrong answers.
Any questions on on this piece?
Maybe we should put.
From a planning perspective, it's significant because this obviously would allow for different types of uses. There is, is an expansion, and it's something that through discussion seems to really meet the current and future needs and designed to be flexible for how that would work. Mr. McGrath?
Oh, go for it.
I just had a question, Mark. I think in an earlier meeting of the bylaw review, we talked about the possibility of putting a separate parking requirement for this, and I don't know if we I don't know if that. Not, maybe you already did it.
I took it from the old assisted living bylaw, and I added it to the parking table.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Maybe the best thing to do for section three would be to go straight to the use table.
Appendix A?
Yes. Is the date on this one 1112?
There we go. It's a little bigger. Okay.
Oh. Just start with residential uses. This is pretty much what it looks like today. You can see that senior living is down there in that number 12. I should probably add the C 8.4 there. Mobile home park is something that you have already. Lodging or rooming house, we had a little tweak.
We have, we have the conversion of the pre 1935. I don't recall.
You know, you have two.
Do you have that?
Okay. You have two conversions. Those are just lifted verbatim from the existing bylaw. Uh, open space development is what you have today, including attached dwellings. This hasn't changed much. If you go to the B section.
In the creative development, C 97, we're basically saying that the, there's no residential allowed in any neighborhood or limited business or any of the residentials. There's only residential, or there's only creative development allowed in the business, limited industrial, industrial?
That's not what the bylaw says. It says that you can have any use that's allowed in any of the underlying districts. I, I think, I think maybe we should take 10 out of the use table.
Or just put Y for all of them with that caveat, because I think you have a note saying that anything is going to go to the has to be incorporated into the.
Yeah. Maybe we should just say, um, yeah, we could stick with the same note, note three.
Uh, Sam?
I just had a quick question. Sorry, my head, headpiece got stuck. The, there's been a lot of talk about, um, short-term rentals and whether, what that falls under. Currently, under, um, the ZBA, they made a determination that, and this may be a, a further conversation to have with the ZBA as well as the planning board. I, I'm not totally sure, but something, um, that would, I, I guess, kind of look at, be looked at as a primary use as whether or not short-term rentals are permitted at all. Most of the commentary and buzz that we've gotten back, or at least that I've gotten back, is that they, they don't want them to be a permitted use in most cases. And I don't know if in, in the precursory review that I had time to look, I don't know that that's spelled out or defined in any way, shape or form in this current edition.
No, you're right.
Kind of a question.
Yeah, if you're going to regulate short-term apartments, then you have to pass a bylaw to do it, and it's not regulated otherwise, so. One of the first things I would do in order to begin that inquiry is to actually go on Airbnb or VRBO or some other outlet. Now, what are we, what are we talking about here? Is it, are there 50? Are there five? Are there two? I, that's, I just did this exercise with Holden. They wanted to put in short-term, they have two. What's, what's the point when you have two and none of them are causing a problem? I understand that they can cause problems. You're very close to Linfield, and you probably have those headlines still in your, in your, you know, your view. But if it's not an issue, do you want to make the effort to, to go there? If you do, there are some models, and I think I've shared them already with the committee. And it's not a big deal to revise, to revamp those models so that they fit your situation.
Yeah, I, just to add, um, there are a whole host of issues when it comes to affordable housing and the, you know, kind of what's deemed the housing crisis in the area. So I, and there has been a lot of discussion about prohibiting them. They are explicitly prohibited, and, and the MBTA communities, it was brought up a number of times by the public, that there was a lot of concern that short-term rentals were just going to be permitted in all of these. It has already had a lot of, um, uh, some of the other departments, as well as the public, have asked that ADUs be explicitly excluded, or short-term rent cannot be utilized as a short-term rental. So I, and the, the last ZBA, when they came through, there were a handful of them that got letters, I believe, this summer to get shut down. The ZBA ruled that there was no current permitted or prohibited, that it didn't fall under a prohibited or permitted use. So it was just kind of in the gray area, and they were allowed to continue. From what I remember, and somebody, please correct me if I'm wrong, but that was the, um, the decision as, as I understood it. So I, I do believe that it is something that needs to be discussed, again, whether or not that's taken up with the planning board or the ZBA when you meet with them later. But it's just something to bring up that it, I do think that it needs to be reviewed in some capacity.
Well, I'll go back and I'll dig out whatever model I earlier circulated. My memory is flawed, and I didn't give you one. I have some on my bank of models, and I'll send one along so that you guys can start thinking about whether you really want to go down that road.
For, for what it's worth, this is not a new issue for the town. The town has wrestled with this issue since 2016. So going on eight years of, of having various discussions. And it, the ZBA's determination that it's neither a permitted use nor prohibited use is where the bylaw review committee of 2016 it ended up, and when it was considered as part of the general bylaws, where the present committee has also decided not to take action explicitly to either permit it nor prohibit it. The advice that we received from Attorney Mullen, as I recall, was that because it's not a permitted use, it is therefore a, not a allowable use under the, as an explicitly as an explicitly permitted component. So there is some gray area, but it, because it's not permitted, and it is something that there is some regulation around, it can be considered a prohibited use. Now, whether, if, if the ZBA is going to have a view that it is a non-prohibited use, because it's something that is gray, which is certainly within, within that right, that, that's inappropriate, inappropriate place for that decision-making to happen. And perhaps we're best off as a town of being more explicit about where this should be. And as people have noted correctly, there can be a host of, of issues, both positive and negative from having short-term, from having short-term rentals. It's not universally good, it's not universally bad. And it's, it becomes a matter of figuring out what are the different components around it. And for that, I would encourage that to be a greater discussion, realistically led by one of the boards that has property use and land use as a primary concern. So the, the good news is you're all, we're all on the right track. And the issues that have been raised are not novel issues that are being raised for the first time. And so previously, the, the decisions have been to not raise an issue where it did not seem to be a problem. But that doesn't mean that it should not be raised at all. As the, as the committees have seen, when there are problems, we try to be reasonably reactive and proactive. The recap occasion is a proactive activity.
Oh, I'll, I'll send off that and you can conspire to tell me what you want me to do. In section B, which are institutional uses for the most part, I like to put exactly what the statute says because we have enough trouble understanding the statute. So let's, let's reduce it to a section three language in one, two and three. Those are the so-called Dover Amendment protected uses. That's why they're all Y. The religious protection dates back to the around nineteen fifty. The educational use dates to the mid fifties and childcare was added roughly the end of the seventies. And so those things are very well understood. No use shall be prohibited in any district. There will be no special permit required, but they are subject to reasonable regulations generally regarding bulk and dimensional requirements. When you work your way down through the four through twelve, you're talking about things that are more locally regulatable. So, for example, municipal uses typically get some sort of benefit because why would you step on your own toes? Hospitals as charitables are large institutions that are usually put in this section. The other big one that jumps out is essential services. That's a public service corporation for all purposes under chapter forty eight, section three. It's a quasi monopoly, DPU, DTE jurisdiction. You can put them on special permit, but if you play ball too hard, they'll just go to DPU, DTE and complain about you. And DPU, DTE will do what they need to do. There is a preemptive thing that they.
Sorry, that essential services, that's where, for example, like a utility.
Yeah.
That's what you're talking about, or like a substation, those types of activities.
Exactly. Water tank, that kind of thing. Don't forget that any of these things that are more up the food chain, so anything authority or county or federal or state is supremacy clause protected and you can't regulate them, then they get to do what they wanted. So these are all pretty plain, straightforward in terms of where this is headed. You go to C. Your agriculture, open land and agricultural uses, you don't have the same problems as most towns with the agricultural exemption. If the agricultural, if you have agriculture on a parcel larger than five acres, now amended to two qualified acres, a qualified acre being a thousand dollars worth of gross proceeds on each of the acres. And agriculture is anything that ends with a T U R E. So aquaculture, silviculture, horticulture, viticulture, that's all allowed by state law. There is also a farm stand exception. You know, that is, that follows with the, with the major exception for the agriculture itself, that's in the state law.
What's the H?
I don't know.
Domestic use only.
Trying to think what that is. I don't know. That's a question. I've got to go back and look at that.
That horses and foul?
Yeah, but I don't, Ruth usually picks up stuff like that. So I'm curious why she didn't. I'll go back and look at my notes. Yeah, it might be that that's what the old ones are. Hang on a second. Let's see. Yeah, but when I look at your existing use table, I got to read the whole thing every time in order to find what I'm looking for. So I'm by bunching these things together, trying to make it easier for the user to.
Why are you doing that in the next one, D? What is the difference between eleven registered marijuana dispensary? And twelve marijuana establishment as defined by master law and or? Is that just something that twelve got added? To preempt something that came from the state and eleven?
So registered. I think ninety four G is medical. Oh, no, it's no, it's recreational use. And I was told that your last round with this failed.
I guess the question is that is, so we've got, is it, do we have a redundancy in terms of we've got two separate?
The dispensary is medical. That's the language in the statute for that. I could make, maybe I should cite the statute, which is slightly different in D eleven.
Or maybe just also add the word medical to it.
Let me find this. Yeah, agriculture, horticulture or floriculture for domestic use only. That's the H F. I must have made an abbreviation and she got confused.
He dipped in horses and fouls, so that's, yeah.
Okay. So that, that puts us over here into D. These are pretty straightforward. I don't think we've.
We need to talk about things here.
Which one?
Six. Display and sale upon an open lot, a portion or lot of merchandise or goods.
Yeah, there's no entries there, right?
Yeah. And is that because that was something that got added?
No, I don't think I added that. I just don't think I made the entries.
Oh, yeah. It's right here. It's basically no everywhere except for business, limited industrial and industrial or special permit.
Which page in the old bylaw?
I've got a six of the eighth, six of eight for the.
I will pick it up. And outdoor commercial recreation is also awaiting decisions. Outdoor commercial recreation would be golf, tennis, skating, boating. I think there is a definition for it.
District is like Quantipower following to? Anyone know?
It gets single residence.
It's, so the lake itself is general, but then single is most of the land that it butts at. With the exception of like veterans field is general.
And what about the area around Spalding Park?
That would also be general.
Reason why I'm asking is because that, that's an area we do have an actual use there.
But the cemetery, the cemetery is, is single.
I don't know if that would apply to public, public recreation on town property. I think commercials more if somebody wants to open a business, right, Mark?
But when I take a look at the, things like the kayaking and so forth, which is could be viewed as a commercial activity that's licensed by the town, that should be allowed in the use table.
For the general.
For the general.
And the definition for outdoors, boat, livery, outdoor ice skating rink, recreation camp, ski ground, riding academy or stable, golf driving range, miniature golf course and the like, a, a, a stable on a five acre parcel would be an exempt type of cultural use. It's a case from Stone that says that.
I'm just thinking from a practical perspective to eliminate a potential, a potential problem. We do currently allow for outdoor recreation on the lake itself. And there's a, a vendor that gets licensed by the town for that. So that would be in the general, general residence district.
Might be easier making that an exemption than making it something that's part of permitting that could open the door for something that you don't want down there. I, I think I think you want to be careful if you're, you're putting allowed uses for commercial recreation by the lake. I mean, I think that could be an exemption for things that are licensed by the town council that they're, they're public use versus putting them as part of our zoning bylaw for, for, for commercial uses around the lake.
What would, what would Quantipower Yacht Club be considered?
Well, they're a club.
Is that a municipal recreation?
It's a membership club.
It's a membership club.
Is it municipally sponsored?
No. There is one that it, that the boating is municipal or kayaking is municipally sponsored, supported or licensed. And then there's the Quantipower Yacht Club, which is a private club that also does do outdoor recreation.
Yeah, I think that would be outdoor commercial recreation.
What was that?
Wouldn't it be outdoor commercial recreation?
Theoretically, you make commercial recreation outdoors allowed in the general residence in order to pick up the, the current use in, in place right now. Then you're allowing people to have like a golf driving range in any general residence area that balanced the town.
Correct. That's why I think you should, you should just do it as an exemption for town, town allow, you know, items that are allowed in that area by, by the town council. Like you're opening a can of worms to try to, to try to fit that into a, you know, a square peg in a round hole. I won't get a brain cramp on it. It hasn't been broken. Any of those uses, Mark, like the Quantipower Yacht Club, they're going to be legal non-conforming no matter what you do anyways.
I just want to make sure we, we don't lock ourselves out of other opportunities that the town may want to, may, may find beneficial. So, you know, if the town wants to expand the kayaking and do some other sort of reasonable use of the lake itself, that if the town has the ability to create its own exemption, I think that's certainly a reasonable type of way of squaring the circle.
Or you just have a special permit.
But, but the point is, it's, technically, if you look at our bylaw, it's probably not allowed today. Because we don't have outdoor recreation.
I'm searching in vain for it.
So it's not, so I mean, that's why I'm saying, I think with some of those issues that the town council licenses and permits around the lake, you have protection in that regard. And if you try to create something now, you, you could open the door for uses down there that you don't want.
Are you saying, Brian, that makes more sense for us to not add outdoor commercial recreation as a, as a use category in general?
That's what I would think.
Line with that.
Okay.
That's my thought. I think you're trying to, we're trying to thread a needle for something that has never been a problem in town and it, and it might end up creating one.
Do other members of the planning board have a reaction to that line of thinking?
Yeah, I don't see a problem taking it out. If someone has an idea to do driving range, there are other ways to approach it.
Yeah, I would agree with Kevin.
Yeah. Attorney Boboski, you got, got that note?
I do.
Excellent.
All right. So I'm going to fix the RMD. I'm going to fix. I've already fixed adult entertainment. So your current bylaw basically just establishes a couple of spacing requirements. But it regulates, unfortunately, it regulates the speech directly, which you can't do. Time law, one oh one, First Amendment. If it's protected speech, you have to regulate some time, place or man, by, by employing time, place or manner restrictions. So the typical way this is done nationally after the Supreme Court cases of the nineteen seventies is that you're regulating property, damage to property, damage to person associated with an adult entertainment business, which is obviously in some venues a risky place. My law school was on the cusp of the combat zone when I first started going there. Difficult to remember that because it's not there anymore. So you have to put that preamble in. We're not really regulating the speech. We're regulating the secondary effects of the speech, which are cringe property, cringe person. And that's all permissible. And I've added all of that. I hope the voters will understand that that's just something that's constitutional nicety more than anything else. The rest of that is pretty straightforward.
We're, so in that one, we've got this.
There's no obstruction ending section.
It literally just defines any adult use in all the constituent types of adult use.
In those two districts by special permit. I think it's in the sevens. It's, it might be towards the end, seven point six, seven point seven. And I preserved your spacing requirement. So restaurant uses, we did add brewery. I don't have any instructions anywhere to put it. So it's just sitting there waiting for some decisions. I also added distillery and I also added winery, I think. And brewery is defined to include a micro brewery or a I can't remember the other definition. But there's, there's two sub definitions under brewery.
Brew pub was one of them, I think.
Yeah, brew pubs.
Essentially a restaurant.
Yeah. Yeah. And distillery is more of an industrial use. So it's over in the industrial stuff to come under G. So F is automobile related uses.
Before, before we go on, for the restaurant uses for brewery, this is something that had come up as a suggestion, but we, there wasn't any sort of guidance from the bylaw review committee. And this is where planning board input would be really helpful. A brewery is a new potential use. The, we have, we have different types of bars and other establishments that are licensed to serve alcohol. We don't have any at the moment that I'm aware of that actually create the alcohol on premises. So we don't have any true breweries, micro breweries or brew pubs where other communities in the area do have them and some of them are really thriving with that. So the question then becomes, where should they be licensed and how should, how should that go? My initial thinking based upon just the discussions that I've heard, is it any such use should probably at least for now go through the Board of Appeals just so that it doesn't get created somewhere without having at least town input into it. But as to which districts it should potentially go into, that's something that input is definitely sought after. And where the planning board certainly has more expertise in this area, your, your input would certainly be appreciated.
I would probably have a mimic number five.
Some question. What's, why do we think that there's a, from a land use perspective, a material difference between a brewery and a restaurant that serves alcohol from an impact perspective?
So if you're a production brewery that's producing, let's say over twenty thousand barrels, the impact on surrounding businesses could be much different than a small restaurant that just produces its own beer in its basement that doesn't distribute it anywhere.
Because there's the associated volume of liquid coming in and out.
Yeah, the distribution, the trucks coming in, coming out. Also smells are going to be greater.
And it's, it's not necessarily all negative uses, a negative side effects.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of, it's. It's just a matter of it's a different use than a, than a general restaurant. So that's where it, as a, similar to the creative district, I see this as being something that it invites potential opportunities for the town. That isn't currently being done here. It may not get used, but it may, it may generate creative thought and someone may end up using this with other districts. To really benefit the town itself. So that, but this is really something that as long-term views, the planning board has a, has a better understanding of what the long-term componentry is than the members that are, with the exception of Kevin, the members that are just on the bylaw review committee.
And I'd like to defer Sam. Looks like she's got her hand raised.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Sorry, my voice is getting worse. Um, is there a way to separate out a commercial brewery versus a micro brewery? Maybe, um, like a micro brewery, whether they have food trucks or a micro brewery with a restaurant, um, and is just kind of drumming that out there.
Scale of things, a brew pub seems smaller than a micro brewery because a micro brewery can have 60,000 barrels per year in the definition that I've added. And the brew pub is producing a, a quote, "small amount." So I don't know that we want to put a cap on that. So the smaller of the two would seem to be the brew pub rather than the micro brewery.
And the brew pub is primarily they, they brew alcohol onsite and it's consumed probably adjoined to a restaurant business presumably.
Yeah.
And maybe it's some combination thereof. What comes to mind is particularly in the Everett area, there are several brew pubs as well as breweries. And many of the breweries will have their own, their own tasting areas. And so they will have their own retail componentry in addition to commercial distribution. So it, this would invite uses, and especially when I think about the industrial areas in particular. The way that the town is currently laid out, this could be a, a very attractive use for some of the properties that if, if this becomes an option. And Sam, I notice you still have your hand up.
Oh, sorry. I just didn't take it down.
And that we're not imposing anything, anything beyond just adding this as a use case and creating those two definitions, right?
Break it out further. I mean, it doesn't need to be brewery, one set of regulations. It could be brew pub. And then another line could be micro brewery. If you don't, for example, you might.
Oh, I just meant in terms of what's currently in front of, being proposed right now, the only reference is to brewery in the, in the codified zoning is brew pub, micro brewery as these two definitions. And then this use state, there's nothing, there's no other, other section with other dimensional requirements, et cetera.
No, they would have to meet the.
The base zoning.
Any business in the district in which they're located.
And as discussed, this could be removed entirely as well.
Yeah.
But the idea here is to, just in, in the, in the sense of updating things, 40 years ago, this wasn't a common type of use. Microbreweries weren't nearly as simple as they are today. We had Sam Adams and, well, we had Sam Adams. Now we have lots of, now we have lots of different microbrews. And as someone who has enjoyed many, I certainly would welcome having a local brewery. If someone wanted to open one up with, as long as it had good product.
If we don't have brewery or brew pub without prohibit, they wouldn't prohibit one by, from coming in as a restaurant, would it? Or what would be the, what, what, what would change if we didn't include it?
The production of the beer is not commonly done at a restaurant.
No, but someone could still come in and apply to put one in or not?
It would be very limited because if they want to actually do any, of any scale, they're going to need special licensing from the, from beverage, alcohol beverage commission.
Well, I guess Matt's point is that would they have, would they apply in the current zoning, uh, under something such as light manufacturing, which is an allowed use?
Depends on how the districts line up. I, I don't know that they'll be exactly the same for light manufacturing. Light manufacturing is, um.
This is industrial, but I meant like if we didn't include brewery, how would, under our current zoning, before we go through this process, what would a brewery, if they wanted to open?
Light manufacturing.
Light manufacturing.
Works this thing, yeah.
Erin brought this up to bylaw review committee as a way to make it seem more inviting for breweries to be here. I know she's trying to bring one in. Um, so I think that was the rationale that she was bringing by including it explicitly.
Cause right now, light manufacturing, if that's the way it would be, is not allowed in any area except for industrial and light industrial where it's allowed by right. Does this set the?
Through the chair, I had a quick question. Um, I'm trying to look at this. Is this currently actually defined in this draft six somewhere?
Yeah, it's section 11.
Okay. Cause I didn't see it.
It's under brewery.
No, I don't have it. Let me see if maybe it's somewhere else.
One forty-two?
One twenty.
I don't know how they print it out.
This is just downloaded from the, yeah, on the website.
Yes.
So the same discussion basically will ensue when we get to distillery.
I would think we would use the same specifications for distillery.
To be honest, what I would, what I would advocate is based on the fact that we think it might be allowed as of right, right now in our industrial zones to have allowed by right in industrial and light industrial. And then the, um, special permit for the three business classifications.
So no, 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 no. When you get to neighborhood business, it would be BA.
Yeah. Three no's. Three BAs and two yeses.
Yep.
That's what I would propose based on what we have on the books currently.
Yeah. Through the chair, just as a quick thing to add, um, I, I don't know who was speaking who said that Erin had brought it up to try to, to be more inviting. The goal, I remember having talked to her about it is, um, either along, um, Main Street or the North Ave area, or possibly even, um, Foundry is kind of looking at some of those areas. I, I guess there's been some talk, um, about potentially making them a little more, uh, in friendly to uses such as the brewery that you would, um, pair with a restaurant or something along those lines. Um, just informational.
Yep. The other thing, what I noticed, just looking at this, again, I, I think that it's on our books, but just do we as a group feel as if the, the distinction between fast food restaurant and restaurant with a drive-through facility is something that is warranted to stay as, as currently constituted? Or do you feel like that those are, let's say, combinable for lack of a better term? But I think fast food and a restaurant with a drive-through facility seems like it's a relatively minor distinction difference.
I feel like that came up in bylaw review committee and.
The, the difference with a drive-through facility is significant enough on the surrounding areas. The, a special permit is probably appropriate and justified. And when I look at the.
But my point is that fast food is more restrictive than restaurant with a drive-through facility. Sam, I see you're raising your hands.
Yeah, just a quick thing to add. I would, uh, uh, agree with the other people. Again, I'm sorry, I can't see your faces, um, on the camera. But I do think that a drive-through facility needs to be pulled out separately to be discussed. However, you want to deal with a fast food chain, whether or not there's a drive-through component is, is a different issue. But I, I do think that it is important that they are separated because there are fast food facilities that you can walk into. They should be allowed, I, I believe in, in neighborhood business. Like if you have a, a quick grab and go, um, places where you would like grab a, a pre-made pizza. You could go in and grab that. That's considered fast food if there's no seats in there. Or, uh, somebody who wants to do prefix, um, prefix food that you would grab that's already made, um, or things that you have to just heat up and cook. I, I don't know that that explicitly falls under existing.
The point is that those fast, that those uses you're talking about are not allowed except for by special permit in a business. And then restaurants with a drive-through facility are allowed by special permit in a much greater land. It almost feels like they're flipped in terms of the impact versus how they're being regulated is my point.
Yeah.
Attorney Bobrovsky, if, if you can explain the difference between in, in this table, a restaurant and a fast food restaurant, I think that will help explain, that'll, that'll help with.
A fast food restaurant serves, um, food that's generally prepared in a, a paper or, or other portable device that can be eaten off the premises as well as on the premises. There's fewer sit-down facilities at the fast food restaurant than there would be at a regular sit-down restaurant. So, uh, it does, a fast food restaurant probably more often involves a drive-through facility, but doesn't always involve a drive-through facility. There are a number of famous places all over Massachusetts where you still have to get out of your car at the Dunkin Donut.
I guess my question is that how many places have a drive-through facility that would not be considered fast food?
Well, that's probably slim to none.
And why are we allowing for a restaurant with a drive-through facility in more places than a fast food?
I'm thinking that that's what it says here.
Through the chair, I may, might suggest looking at separating out restaurant, fast food restaurant, and then drive-through facility. If you want to separate out those uses, um, how fast food restaurant gets permitted or not permitted is beside the point right now. But the component that is an issue is the drive-through component. So.
So they are separated.
There can be a fast food restaurant without a drive-through, whether that's a Dunkin or another restaurant. I've seen them and I've also seen sit-down restaurants that have a drive-through facility. I drove by one the other day in Bill Reka. It's a little like diner, neighborhood diner. It's not fast food. They prepare, it's scratch kitchen. But there are restaurants that exist, whether they're not in Wakefield currently is moot. I mean, you're looking at potentials. So if you've got fast food as one component with or without a drive-through, a restaurant with or without a drive-through. Those are, you know, kind of, the drive-through component needs to be reviewed on its own, separate from the restaurant is, is my two cents at least. Because it, it, I think that, um, the, um, the component or, um, point that somebody made about how it is really a much heavier use is accurate. But there are definitely fast food restaurants that exist in plenty of places without drive-throughs at all. So, um, I, I don't know how you want to phrase that. Again, I just food for thought.
My default position has always been that any drive-through facility, whether it's at a dry cleaner, a pharmacy, a restaurant, any place or involved than we are in drive-through facilities, they all ought to require a special permit. It's not the use behind the window. It's the drive-through window itself that requires.
I think if, if we are addressing, if we're changing fast food restaurant to be BAs across the board and consistent with it, then I think that makes more sense than being more restrictive for fast food restaurants than for restaurants with drive-throughs.
I would even go to the next level of this, which is the automotive uses, uh, under, I can't read it, G, F, F or G.
So, but before we advance to that, what, what I'm hearing is a proposal, I've just put it in, on screen in italics. Is to, is to change what's currently no's for a fast food restaurant in the NBLB and the two industrial districts from no's to be permitted with Board of Appeals. So that way it's consistent with restaurant or a fast food restaurant with drive-through facility. And then also the secondary change to that would be in the definition, in the table for item number five, to put a restaurant or a fast food restaurant with drive-through facility. That way it's very clear that a fast food, that any sort of drive-through that's used for food has to have a ZBA approval, which would be different than potentially a bank, which may have a drive-through facility and may, it may be by right or otherwise elsewhere.
Basically clarifies that if you have a restaurant, you're allowed as of right in neighborhood business, business, limited industrial, industrial. And then if you switch from restaurant to fast food, that triggers a ZBA. Or if you add a drive-through component, that adds a DBA. I think that makes more sense.
I would agree. Yeah, that makes, align them. It does, definitely makes sense.
That's right. The next section on automotive uses though, just to double down.
Sam.
I had just had one really quick question. Um, what would you classify the prefix food as then? If somebody's going in and buying, say like, you know, pre-made meals that they could pick up for the week or, or pre-made food that they just have to reheat. What would you classify that as? Cause it's not fast food under this classification because they're not consuming it on site. There's no tables. It's not a restaurant, again, because nobody's going in to eat. They're taking food and they're leaving, but they're not consuming it on premises at all. Is that still considered fast food? Cause I think that the definition says that it's for consumption on or off-site. I just want to clarify.
And we have had those businesses in town. I'm not aware of any that are currently operating on a, on a sort of scale. But we certainly have had a couple of those. I know on Tuttle Street o- over the years, there was a, a kitchen that was used for the, for this purpose for, for success. So the, the question really is if there is to use a, in a, a business model like HelloFresh, but at, at a local level.
I think the difference is that fast food restaurant says primarily intended for immediate consumption.
Right. And so it, it, it doesn't seem, the, the question, and this may go to you, Attorney Bobrovsky, is where you, there's a commercial kitchen that's preparing food for future use. It would be, it would be similar.
No, because this also says available upon a short waiting time, five to eight minutes and packaged or presented in a manner such that it can be readily eaten inside or outside. So I think what you're defining Sam would be something that's not a five to eight minute wait.
Right.
Readily available.
So it's a matter of what type of use is that? And, and, and that's, that's really the question.
Has the word takeout changed anything? Changed it to takeout restaurant? Does that hope you were hurt? Good night.
Good question.
Attorney Bobrovsky, do.
You know, there, there are pretty standard definitions for what constitutes a fast food, fast food restaurant. I, I can dig.
And I'm just trying to figure out what, what that, how you would classify that business for zoning purpose.
I, I think unless it has sort of like a preordained formula for service, most fast food restaurants are part of a chain.
Right. This is, but, but this is a model that we've had, that we've had.
Do you mind if I pause for a second? Attorney McGrath just raised his hand. He may have something valuable for that.
Uh, I just want to point out that we, our, our bylaw and, uh, in this rendition defines fast food. So there's a definition in the bylaw of fast food. I think it's, if it's prepared, like you, you can go to it, but it's right in that definition section. And it's in this version six also. It's carried over.
Yep.
Yeah. And through the chair, Mr. Attorney McGrath, could you clarify? I mean, this just seems like it's, it's something different than the fast food. And my, and, and attorney Bobrovsky, you, you could also clarify. It seems like this, the definition of what I'm talking about is a little bit different. And again, this is just because I'm going to be dealing with administering the zoning code. I want to make sure that whatever is going forward is very clear. Because again, it's, it's not meeting those terms of ready in five to eight minutes. Some things might be ready in five minutes, but some things might require, like if it's a lasagna, it's going to take 30, 40, 60 minutes. I don't know how big it is in the oven and it's not going to meet that intent of, I mean, it might meet what you might stretch as intent, but it's not meeting the parameters of what is explicitly spelled out.
So a- as an example of a local business that does this, I, I can't remember the exact name of it. It, I believe they sell empanadas over in Redding. It used to be the location of Drew's Stews. And they sell product for takeout, mostly frozen. And so they prepare it in the commercial kitchen. And I think this is the business model that, that you're talking about. They're talking about Sam, where it's a commercial kitchen. They're preparing food. And so it's definitely a restaurant likeness, but they're not serving it and certainly not in any quantity, uh, on promise. And it's not something for immediate consumption. It's something that you take out. So kind of like what we used to, we might've used to say for like rotisserie chickens, that you take home the whole rotisserie chicken before eating it. Ms. McGrath, did, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I, I think the senior planner has a good point. This has always been a struggle of, you know, I think there's an opportunity to clearly define these. This has always been a struggle of, you know, I think there's an opportunity to clearly define these and, and tighten them up a little bit. Because when you look at our definition of fast food establishment, it's, it's an establishment whose primary business is the sale of food for consumption on or off the premises, which is primarily intended for immediate consumption rather than as an ingredient or component available, available upon a short waiting time, five to eight minutes, and packaged to present in such a manner that can be readily eaten either inside or outside the premises where it is sold.
Honestly, based on what the senior planner has described, it sounds like from the definitions that we have on the books, it's closest to fast food. Even though I, I don't think that's the intent, but if you look at the definition of restaurant, that's for primarily on-premise consumption, which that business model doesn't sound like it aligns for. So while, I would argue, based on what we have on the books, that's the closest thing.
I mean, in some situations though, this is like raw food. Through the, through the chair, it just, I, I want to, in, in somebody who's going to have to be dealing with this, if somebody calls and says, hey, I have this business, I want to open on Main Street, is this something I can do? And I'd say, well, you know, I mean, it's not really in the code.
I think that would be the, correct, based on what we have right now.
Right. And that's, that's what I'm, I'm asking for some clarification. And, and again, this may be something that is best just a table right now and ask Attorney Bobrovsky to go back, look at the definitions. Because I know there's tons of definitions that you can find that are on the state level, if there's a definition that fits this. And then we can dial down from there as to what would be the potential of what we could do here, should the board choose to do that. I'm just asking, has the planner dealing with this on a daily basis? It, it would be helpful for me to have something a little bit more explicit.
Sam, why would you even call that business model?
Sale of prepared foods to reheat.
I'm, I'm happy to look it up and, and, and dig into it a little bit more. I, I have a number of, actually I have a couple of friends who have this actual business model in other states that are functioning. But it's not because this doesn't really fall under grocery. And I don't remember off the top of my head what it fell under in Jacksonville. But I'm happy to coordinate with the bylaw review committee about what it's called. Try to figure something out if the planning board is again supportive of that.
I mean, at the top end of the food chain there, you've got caterers whose product is mostly cooked. You've got sale of prepared food, which may involve some cooking or reheating. I don't know where you go down the food chain from there.
So Attorney McGrath, I think you've got your hand raised again.
I just want to point out, I think, I'm just kind of, it's the first time I've really done a scrub of the use. And I think this might be some things that are omitted unintentionally, like we don't have in our current table, we have financial institutions. I don't see those included here. That would be our banks. Offices are another use that are allowed in the business district, which are just not, they're not here. So I think this, I think as Sam is alluding to, this whole, maybe i- is part of this, this whole use thing should just be kind of reconciled with our current use table to make sure that we're not omitting something by mistake. Unless I'm missing it, I, I don't see financial institutions or offices that are, that are a big part of our town and uses that aren't, they're not here. I think it's an easy task that we can all do, people that are looking at this, just to make sure we don't unintentionally omit something. That's all.
I was just going to add, I do think that there's a lot more to this than can, at least this particular component that can be, then can be solved right now during this open dialogue. So I would be happy again to continue that conversation outside of the meeting and then potentially come back and discuss it further. I can, happy to even spend some of my time researching to help us all get on the same page of what types of things this business is, business model that I'm talking about is called. And to Attorney McGrath's point, kind of just do a precursory review of some of the other existing businesses, such as even a bakery is not listed on this list. There's a handful of uses that we do, we may want to include, whether it's in definitions or, or whatnot. That would be, I think, helpful for, for myself and future planners and the public and others who would be utilizing the code.
I think that.
Well, I was wondering if the principal use table was a restraint. I would suggest a drive-in facility is the key thing. So you start with the description of drive-in facility, and then you've got a number of categories under that, or separate numbers for each of the other things that you have. Just put more entities in there. Because you have different results in the table for the different entities. So I'm suggesting a redrafting of the whole thing. I'll leave one, two, three, and six alone. And then I guess the, in the hotel, you leave it alone. And then you've got a drive food, food facility for fast food, or drive-in facility for other stuff. All series of different uses. But that's my layman's suggestion. Thank you.
And, and to be clear, this particular page that we're looking at is just for restaurant uses. So it's just for food-based uses.
I would however advise that in the automotive-related use section, you add a line at the bottom, any drive-through facility, no, no, no. And then whether you want a drive-through facility in the other districts, it's up to you. But at least across the board, it ought to be five BAs at the end of that. So if it's a dry cleaner, a pharmacy, a restaurant, a bank, a liquor store, they're coming. Anybody needs a special permit to put in a drive-through facility.
If we just take out five and add it in under automotive use, would that solve it?
I don't think you need five if you do what I just described.
Yeah. And I, I would propose that probably some, anything that we can simplify and collapse down the uses, I think makes a lot more sense.
Agree. Delete, delete five.
Can you, we're going to delete restaurant or fast food. Got it. Okay.
Screen is currently a little bit too small to have all the tools available.
But so if we're just going to just say we're going to omit five and then we're going to add drive-through in the automotive use, which is the next page. And then no, no, no for all the residential. And then BAs for all of the business and industrial is what I think I'm, I'm hearing from folks.
You're putting that in the automobile-related uses, it doesn't go there.
Yeah, Attorney McGrath, I would, I would agree with you. Through the chair, I would agree with you, especially as a planner and any layperson who's going to be utilizing this. I mean, hopefully they're looking at their zoning regulations before even starting to talk to an attorney. They're not going to be looking under automotive uses if they're looking for a restaurant use. So what somebody else has said is that you'd have food service establishments could be your main category. And then under that, you could have a, a kind of a walk-in facility, like what I was talking about, or a bakery, that you don't actually, you grab your food or your item and you leave immediately. And then you'd have a sit-down facility where you'd have that, you need to be verifying parking or whatnot because of the number of seats. Then you would have the component of brewery. You, you can have all those, you know, kind of broken down as additional under food services. But I, I would definitely keep drive-through as a component within restaurant because that's where someone's going to logically go. If you make it so that they have to go to five different places to try or to have to read the entire code to try to get enough information, you're going to have people who effectively just end up giving up on things, which is creating more barriers and impacting our economic development. As dramatic as that may sound, you will have people that do that. Especially if there's any language barriers, then a lot of restaurants are opened up by people who may not have English as their first language.
So from, from a practical perspective along those lines, and this gets to a core purpose of the recodification. We could potentially put drive-through uses as a separate general component tree, as was previously suggested, where it's only allowed in the business and industrial districts by special permit, period. Regardless of why the drive-through exists, because it can be used for many different purposes. As suggested, it can be used for restaurants, we use for pharmacies, it can be used for banks. Those are all currently done within the town, could be used for things such as dry cleaners and groceries and other purposes that people are now starting to use drive-throughs for. Do we, would it make sense to have that as a general piece or broken out within each section? And from a planning perspective, I'm curious, would it make sense just to put notes on each page referencing another section, such as drive, as, as I've just put it here as a, a proposal, drive-through uses are covered as a general use. See that, see that, whatever that would be in whatever table that is.
I'm not sure because I think that if you think about it, right, so we've got a residential use, it's not committed to drive-through theirs. You've got institutional uses, so like religious, childcare, museums, film therapy, hospital. I don't think I see any drive-through there.
They could be drive-through, drop-off, is that part of it?
Right. Drive-through.
Childcare. I don't know, drop-off. Is that?
And we've, we've actually had, we've actually had drive-through senior care.
Through the ca- the, the chair, there's also drive-through flu clinics. So there are some uses in that category, it sounds like. And yes, there are drive-through, drop-off children's facilities, either for preschool. I know at some elementary schools they do it. And at some daycares as well, where the child has to have all of their stuff ready to go to get pulled out of the car. And the parents are not, and generally speaking, are not allowed in the facility, especially in higher traffic areas.
Sounds like we need a whole table for this drive-through.
Well, either a whole table for drive-through or as was discussed, the drive-throughs are always required a special permit, which I'm hearing makes a lot of sense because of the effects that drive-throughs can have. And perhaps make that as a notation as part of the, both the general code and for the use table. Because again, the, the goal here really is to make it so that we're inviting some new uses. We're inviting business to be a part of the town and have as vibrant a town as we can have. And also be realistic so that people aren't trying to chase and say, well, I want to do this, and what if I add that? Because to, I think what Sam was saying, they may not realize that, oh, that's an auxiliary use, similar to an ADU.
Because what's preventing us from just putting at the bottom of this, you know, a, instead of getting rid of five, you just have something saying, drive-through associated with any other uses in this table. And then you add it to this, to E, to the institution, or to the institutional B, based on what people just said. And then the, the retail service uses table. So you just have it in three locations, just saying.
For all, all, all of the locations.
So where do we go as a ZBA to see if it's allowed though? So don't we need a table?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying add drive-through for any associated uses, special permit, no, 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 special permits are required. And you add it as a line in this, this table and then the other two tables. So you have it in three locations. Because you're going to want to have it, we want to have that denoted along with the uses that, that that would be pertaining to, right?
Well, just a dumb question, but why can't you put in F, motor vehicle as the caption instead of automobile? And then end it by saying motor vehicle, drive-through facility, no, 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 BA, 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 BA.
And what, and what I'm, what I'm hearing is that it would, because the principal use isn't the motor vehicle. The principal use is as a restaurant. Principal use is for something else.
Yeah, I would argue that's associated with a motor vehicle use. And just to, just to point you, point everyone in the direction, if you look at our table, if you look at this table now, look at principal use, retail service uses and places of assembly, number five. We've got drive-in retail store, our service establishment. I always struggle with this. You know, it should say drive-through. Well, I think that will come out. This will probably come out. I think, I think Chia Lieber and Senior Plan Samantha is, is going in the right direction on this. It's just, it's, it's a catch-all. It's a catch-all because there's just too many contradictory terms in here. Drive-in, drive-through, to just catch it with everything.
Yeah, through the chair, I would agree with Attorney McGrath. There's a lot of, we want to make sure that our consist, our, our definitions are not only consistent within our own code, but they're also consistent with the state. If you try to pull that out and, and talk about it as an automotive drive-through, that may not be actually meeting the definition of the state that relates to the restaurant, drive-through component. And there are also, I guess they're all drive-through, but there are also liquor stores that you can technically drive-through. I don't know if they have them here. They did in Florida, where you would get a straw taped to the outside of your, your margarita to go. And there were also restaurant, or liquor stores that you would literally drive in, you'd get your, your, your stuff and you'd put it in the car in the regular bottle. So it, it, just whether or not those are permitted here is a, is a different story. But the, the, what I'm getting at is there are a lot of different ways you could have a drive-through. So I am inclined to consider pulling out drive-throughs so that everybody is going through the process. So they're all treated equal because generally speaking, the amount of turnover that you're going to get and, and the impact of traffic and daily travel and, and all of that needs to be evaluated, whether it is a pharmacy or a restaurant or a bank, that still needs to have, still needs to happen as part of the conversation. And I, I, again, I'm not the only person making these regulations, obviously. But that's my two cents is it would be helpful to, whether it's here or in a separate drive-through section. I just really would like some consistency and I want to make sure it's very explicit on what it covers so that it's easily enforceable and it doesn't end up being some sort of arbitrary application or hard to find.
So Sam, would you, would you say that what Chair Lieber's put on the screen, this number seven, would address your concerns? Are you still concerning that's too broad?
To answer your que- that, I think that that's a reasonable option, excuse me, or it could defer back to a separate section on drive-through. How, again, to me, it's not as important onto how that's spelled out. The issue I'm having though is just making sure it's very explicit as to how it's spelled out. So that it's something that I can look at, whether it's here or in another section, and very easily see the components that are being reviewed or where it's permitted or how it's permitted. So if somebody comes in and talks to me, or someone comes in and talks to Aaron or anybody else in our office, that we can easily be able to relay that information without having to pop through four different places and hope that we got all of it.
It should not be in the restaurant use because it's going to be applicable to every use.
One of my towns has put it in the last section of the use table, which they titled other uses.
Mark, isn't it really, isn't it really an accessory use, the drive?
Technically, technically it is. It's not the principal use. It's, you know, once you get there. But I, I thought putting it in, there was only one other use. I can't remember what it was. But you could put something broad and, and generic there. Any drive-in, drive-through, drive-by, drive-up, drive-out facility for commercial purposes or otherwise requires a special permit in those five districts.
That's the way to do it. Because then it's, because then it's considered an accessory use, which it is, regardless of whatever the base use case is.
I mean, it follows, in, in the table for that town, it follows accessory uses. And if accessory is K, then this would be L.
So what I'm hearing is something along this line, this would be H, which is our last section. Something along this line, this would be H, which is our last section, the accessory uses. Have some, some sort of catch all, any drive in, drive through, et cetera. For any. Otherwise permitted use.
I feel like it's hard to find that though, if you're looking.
And to that, I think that what we've, it's there and.
I mean, you might want to keep it in both spots.
Well, as opposed to keeping it in the table here, I would suggest that we put in.
Seat, seat accessory use. Seat accessory use for drive through.
Yeah.
Requirements, and then you could add that note to the retail.
All of them, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Why do you need, why, why do you need that, you're just confusing it. It's in the, it's in the table already, it's under an accessory use.
Yeah, this one, this one, um, had.
I think the way Mark was going is already, I don't think you need all these notes in the bylaws, it's just going to confuse people, they want to do a drive through, they're going to find it. The accessory use.
I don't want to get into an argument about whether it's accessory or not, so if it were under other uses. You would say drive in, drive through, drive by. At any facility, whether. Accessory or principal, I mean, I think, I don't think a drive through is ever a principal. Unless you're attaching it to the restaurant, in which case it would be a different kind of restaurant, that would be a principal use. But what we're really attacking is not the restaurant, we're attacking the drive through.
Right.
Through the chair, I would agree that it needs to go under accessory if we're going to be filing it anywhere, it's not a primary use, you're not going to have a drive through. Just drive through as a use, that would be a bridge, uh, or a tunnel. Um, or an overpass or something like that, but as, as a standalone use. So if we're going to be looking at that, I believe that there is a use that it would be supporting. And what we're going to those different sections for, for the primary use is whatever that primary use is, whether it's commercial, industrial, residential. Um, restaurant, et cetera, that type of thing, so I would encourage us to utilize the, put that under a accessory use.
And I may be, I, I may be dating myself here, but what comes to mind as you talk about that. And if here I, I am is Photomatt, who, who you may remember back from, well, wait, many decades ago. Which was, which, which were literally drive through kiosks, and the primary use was actually as a drive through kiosk. It, there was no place to walk in, it was literally a person, and. I haven't seen it in the Boston area, but as we go out west, I have seen coffee places that are exclusively similar in that way. Now, I would, one would could definitely argue that would be a restaurant as a primary use for that, but. If someone wanted to do something similar to Photomatt, might be in, in that style. I think that just by addressing it and putting accessory in other uses, it, just in the heading. It covers the various things that have been discussed here, so I'm just throwing this out as ways to. Trying to address some of these pieces, because I think these are fantastic. Use cases that are coming up to address very real concerns so that we can have as vibrant a component. And I'm basing this on the conversations that, that I'm hearing here, so just throwing this out there as suggestions. Sam?
Yeah, through the chair, thank you actually for mentioning that, it brought something to my mind, um. An ATM, a drive up ATM, that is a standalone ATM facility, there was a photo map that was actually converted into an ATM at my previous job. And, and we dealt with that, so our ATMs, how, because I don't have this table, and I don't know if it's somewhere else, but it wasn't part of the six when I printed it out. Is that spelled out separately, or would we be including that in this drive in, drive through, drive up? Et cetera category.
Wouldn't the primary use in that case be financial, and then the accessory would be the drive through?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, but if you, if you're serviced by being in your car, that's a drive through facility. An ATM drive up is a drive through facility. Whether it's attached to the main building, or it's a separate freestanding kiosk, it's all a drive through facility. And the problems are the same in a Dunkin Donuts, a bank ATM, the, the first problem is the queue. What are you going to do with it, how far does it back up on a rainy day? What, you know, is the proximity of the pickup window to the pedestrian walkway that's invariably in front of the building? If you're, you don't have more than fifty, really more than thirty feet, fifty feet in front of the, from the drive through pickup window to the sidewalk. You got people jammed by traffic trying to make right and left hand turns out of there, with pedestrians trying to cross the street at the same time. So the problems are the same, this is, I've had a number of trials about drive through, and. These are the things that make the judges' mind up as to whether this is a good use or a bad use.
So in, in need. Say car wash, you would have to, they'd have to refer to. Car wash would have to be referred to accessory use also, because you'd have, drive your car to a car wash. So. With this, you know, would, if you're applying for a car wash, would you still need to, you'd obviously still have to look at this also, correct?
That's more just, I think, a retail service, it's a service establishment in itself, you drive, you know, that's, that, that's the use, that's the primary use. The, the, it's not drive, it's not a drive through, it's a car wash, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a principal use, you're driving through it.
Okay.
I, I, it's a good point, Matt, but I think that's the difference. Dan, could you go back to the definition under the accessory, just, just, just to. You know, because I always argue these things in court, Mark, you know, words matter, so any drive in, drive through, et cetera. I don't think you need for any otherwise, I think you just need for any use permitted by right or special permit. I don't like the term permitted use, because come, someone could say you can't, you can't do it if it's a special permit use.
Well, I guess the other question is, if I'm just looking back at the previous principal uses in section D. Is, uh, number five, it says drive in retail store or service establishment. And that also is. Board of Appeals, I think that would be.
Yeah, it's going to come out, yeah, I, I pointed that out, um, earlier.
Right, because that, that's the same thing, right?
You won't need that anymore. Yep.
Oh, I guess that's true, right?
Right, just take that out, because that's, that's why I, I pointed out, what's drive in mean versus drive through, so that's a horrible term, drive in.
Sam?
Sorry, I'm laughing about the drive in thing, um, through the chair, just one really quick question. Previously, there was the financial component spelled out separately, or at least listed as part of the, the group. Is there a financial, I, I, because again, I, I can't see this, um, and scroll through it on my own, your, your use table. But is the financial service listed separately?
No, it was omitted by mistake, I think.
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
And the office one was too, they follow each other, but they're actually in the same entry, professional and business offices. And the financial institution, so I'll go back through this with a fine tooth comb, but I don't know how that got deleted.
Okay.
Uh, Attorney Bobrowski, do you agree that with principal use, that drive in retail store and service establishment would then be able to be, come out as well?
I don't see reason to put it in there separately if you're putting all special, all, all drive through, drive in, drive by. Facilities on special permit.
Okay, if you, if you.
The only other thing you could do would be to put under D, an asterisk, right in the caption. An asterisk that would refer you to the bottom saying any of these things that require drive in, drive through, drive by. Requires a special permit, sees, see other uses, you know, then now you've got a cross reference, and you could do the same thing. In automotive, in restaurant, in office, and you'd only have one small entry at the bottom of that table, or the, you know, part of the use table. Other towns do it with, like, one of the towns I'm doing this in right now has a ten thousand square foot, you jump to special permit. So even if it's allowed by right in the table, there's an asterisk that says if you jump beyond ten thousand feet, you really need a special permit. It's the same basic principle.
I think that because we're treating them all the same regardless, probably doesn't make sense to have more than. If we were treating them differently and having different thresholds, it might make sense to have it more in one location, but I feel like we should just omit all references, the drive ins. Drive throughs, whatever other language there is, except for the one spot we're having accessory use.
You want me to put the asterisk after D E F?
I think that's an overkill, Mark, I think, I think you're just going to mess up the bylaw. That's my, as a citizen, you know, I think, you just kind of, it's too, too much, you don't need it, it's in the bylaw.
Yep. Too many footnotes start adding up.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Keep it, yeah, keep it simple, and you should be able to find it.
And lastly, do you want me to put it under other?
And the way, the way these things work, if somebody wants to do it, you know, they're going to go to the building department, or they're going to go see the senior planner, and they're going to say, I want to do this, I need to drive through. And they're going to say you need a special permit, there it is in the bylaw, but at least they're going to know where it is.
And I think, Dan, can you go back down to the section where we have the, this, and, so I think as you added accessory and other uses. So I think that by adding and other uses, means so it just is a catch all for anything associated with that.
Yeah.
So then you don't have to get in any arguments over it's an accessory or a principal.
Right. Yep. It, on ten, any, any drive in, drive through, et cetera, for any, um, use allowed by right or special permit.
We'll allow for that.
What's that?
We will allow for that.
You just want to put special in front of the word permit.
Um, so in that case, could you, could we go back up to the, I think we, I think we're finished restaurants, but maybe just go back up there, double check to make sure before we. Hit, I think that we still haven't done automobile related uses at all.
Uh, going back, we've talked about breweries, this brings us over to automobile uses. Car washes.
Yeah, what do you want to do there?
Would you just say, uh. Uh, limited business, business, light industrial and industrial, make that all Board of Appeals.
Sorry, what, you're saying business and, and the two industrials?
Yeah, just, right, not in, not in, yeah, from LB to the right, make that all BA.
Any other members of the planning board have a reaction to that, that seems to make sense to me.
That makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to point out that, um. You know, the limited business district is that area around the lake that's sensitive, I don't know if you want car washes allowed there. That's a discussion you might want to have.
I don't know.
That's it.
It's only right, it's only right up by where the Cabot, Cabot and Forbes.
Yeah. Lakeside Office Park and.
Make it an, make it no.
Like LB no?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And then going need a special permit, especially if someone stays in their car. Car wash will be one thing, the wax will be quite another.
You yourselves upset?
Well, we have one, we have both styles in town, so.
Before, sorry, before we move off, um, and, any of the other automobile ones that we need to talk about, or are they all copy paste, no discussion needed?
I don't think there's anything else. I don't know what happened to the office stuff, are you treating a professional office the same as a medical office right now? They're typically parked at different rates, a business office might be parked at one space per two hundred and fifty square feet. Or even three hundred, a medical office usually has a higher parking.
Yeah, Mark, you're spot on, so I can give some insight on this, that we, oddly, our bylaw currently has a parking requirement for medical office. But medical office is not specifically.
Yeah, called out.
Called out, Mark, in our current bylaw. So it's very awkward, and you're spot on, it does have a high, I think it's one per three hundred square feet instead of.
That's why there's always somebody in line ahead of you.
So that might be, that's a really good point, Mark, that might need to be cleaned up.
Are you, are we suggesting that you, we would need to add.
New line.
Medical office as a.
And clinic.
And clinic.
Yeah.
As a use, and then it's probably essentially copy paste for like the hospital. Where it's no in the single, special single and single, and then. Uh, no in business and limited industrial, and then, uh, Board of Appeals for general. Uh, and the two smaller businesses and industrial.
What are you talking about for the use?
Medical office.
So professional and business office right now is four no's and five y's. Well, wait a minute, there might be an extra column here, no, there still is. One, two, three. Three. And then I'm taking the MR out now, three, the first three districts would be no, MR, forget about, and then there's five Y's. So NB, LB, BL one, LI rather, and I would be yeah. I don't know if you want to distinguish between a medical office and a business office, but there's a lot higher. Trip generation by a medical office. So I think at a minimum, what you ought to do when I add that back in, because I'm sorry, I missed it, is add a new line for medical office, just so you can park it differently.
Yeah.
No other reason.
It's one per two hundred square feet versus one per two fifty in our current bylaw.
Okay.
Mark, do you need a definition of medical office, we don't have one.
No, but I had a fight recently with the building inspector in Concord where one of my clients wanted to put in an urgent care. A medical office wasn't allowed use, and the planner's initial reaction was, well, come on, Mark, that's an urgent care. I said, well, what's the difference? Give me, tell me what the difference is in trip generation between a doctor's office and an urgent care, isn't an urgent care just another doctor's office? Modernized for the end of this, you know. For, for the, for our, for this time, and I got the building inspector to agree with me.
So for our purposes, an urgent care would be a hospital?
Yeah.
It would be a doctor's office.
Be a medical office.
But I, I would probably need to define it as such, so that you didn't have a fight.
Yeah.
I mean, who, who, who heard of an urgent care ten years ago?
So back to industrial uses, before we get off of this, this is the last section we have not discussed. But industrial uses, distilleries. Which we briefly, we touched on earlier, we just didn't put in, in the table.
There is a definition.
It'd be brewery or distillery? Or?
Brewery, I, as I understood it, was smaller than a distillery. Is, is that accurate?
Yeah, I think so, I'm looking for the definition.
Through the chair, I do believe a distillery has to do with liquor, whereas a brewery has to do with beer.
Yeah, so the, the difference in licensing, and, and alcohol licensing, which, there are different requirements for. A brewery versus distillery.
I'd almost argue a distillery is probably closer to a restaurant use, based on the fact that you can have a distillery that has. A serving counter, you know, similar to a brewery, it's the same. Licenseur aside, same fundamental business plan concept.
I would, that's the way I see it.
Yeah, there are no balance requirements or minimum maximums in the definition.
I'd almost say copy paste what we had for brewery, and for the distillery uses, and then keep distillery as a separate line item, but then just slide it into the restaurant use section.
Yeah, somehow keep them together in a way. Yeah, somehow keep them together in a way, because
Yeah.
You don't wanna be jumping around.
So take it out of where I stuck it in the industry.
Yeah, just shift it to restaurant uses.
And Samantha?
Yeah, I had just had a quick question. Um, so a distillery, especially in the definition, it doesn't talk about it being affiliated with food service. Um, I'm a little bit concerned with putting it with a restaurant use, which is typically by definition, something that's related to food service. Um, or whether this gets changed to food service uses, if these are, I mean, the, the point I'm trying to make is like a liquor store. Um, because yes, if you look up the definition of a distillery, it's, um, the distillery versus brewery, the definition is that a brewery is going to make beer, wine, hard cider and sake. And a distillery is going to produce distilled spirits, also known as liquor, such as whiskey, vodka, gin, rum. Um, so, but again, the definition that is currently in this draft six list of distilleries is having a tasting room, but no food service. Um, so I would just wanna kind of put that out there. I don't know that I would prefer to have that in restaurant uses.
Well, the next sentence says may also include, do you think if that were shall?
So, distilleries have food, or they have food trucks similar to breweries?
Yeah. Sure, but a food, a food truck is not an onsite preparation as a restaurant is. If you have a brewery or a brew pub that has food trucks, those are completely different companies and not part of that primary use. That would, I don't even know if that's an accessory use technically. Um, getting into the weeds, but distillery, again, could, but is not required to have food service, cause sure, you could have a whiskey distillery and then serve, I don't know, steak with your whiskey, make a whiskey sauce. I, I have no idea. Um, but generally speaking, it may have a tasting room, but a tasting room is not food tasting. It's like sipping the different liquors that they're distilling. Um, so I
I don't think most breweries in Massachusetts have onsite food though, that they're making there in their facility.
I think it's not.
Fair. I mean, brew pubs, by definition, I think would. I have to double check what the definition is in here. Um, but there are models for breweries that have food that is made onsite.
There are, just Massachusetts doesn't have as many of them, especially if you look at the ones around here. Some of them are moving that way. That's why I'm thinking the requirement should be the same for the two of them, and maybe we call this food and beverage uses, something like that instead of restaurant.
Okay, yeah, that would cover it. Um, my hang up again, yeah, was at the, the restaurant. So yeah, if it's food and beverage, that totally covers it. Thank you for that suggestion.
Fundamentally, they, they both can go both ways.
Right, yeah.
So would you make a special box, if you will, for food and beverage uses?
We're just saying they would change E to food and beverage use instead of restaurant use.
I get it, okay.
Yeah, and through the chair, um, one really quick question. It does say under the definition that the facilities may also include other uses such as standard restaurant, bar, or live entertainment as permitted. Um, and I just wanna make sure that in here, that that's, I guess I would like to maintain that if, if we're gonna use it under food and beverage, that both the brewery and the distillery have a, have some similar language, that they are permitted to also have a restaurant and/or, I don't know if we wanna say food trucks, I don't know if you wanted to get into that. That's, might be a different, entirely different issue. Um, but I think some commonalities between those two could be helpful.
I think the distillery definition says if allowed in the district, otherwise, so just eyeballing that, it doesn't seem to be an impediment for either the brewery or the distillery.
Uh, through the chair, no, what I'm trying to say is that brewery does not have that same language that the distillery does.
Yeah.
And so I'm, I'm just asking if we could have some consistency between those two.
Yep, I'm gonna take the sentence and plug it in the other one.
Great, thank you.
Take the distillery language and add it to the brewery language.
Maybe creating new business models. We're distilling.
Vodka, gin, yeah. Already out there.
Ways to make Wakefield the destination.
I mean, yes, that's encouraging economic development and growth and place making by also making these more accessible to the public and future business owners, not just attorneys. No offense to the attorneys on the call.
And as a resident, these are all very tasty options, so much appreciated.
If we go back down to industrial uses, so I think most of the rest of these are existing.
Before I depart there, so if I take the distillery language, it says, facilities may also include other uses such as standard restaurant, bar, live entertainment. With retail sales of only those alcoholic beverages produced at the facility for consumption on or off the premises, that's the language from distillery. I don't wanna say that for a brewery, do I?
I would think you would, actually.
Um, just asking.
Yeah, I would think you would, because if it's a brewery, then the consumption could be on or off premises, depending upon how it's set up and the model that they're using.
A lot of times, a lot of breweries, you can have the consumption on premise from like a draft or something like that, and then you can have also like to-go sales.
Yeah.
But I think your question is that, are you limiting them to only the things that are developed onsite?
Right.
Or do you wanna have the breweries have the ability to sell other breweries or other alcohols?
Not everyone is treehouse.
And I think you wanna keep it to what they produce onsite. I mean legally, that's
So then I'll take that sentence.
Through the chair, um, I would respectfully disagree, um, that it shouldn't be kept to what's being made onsite. There are plenty of breweries, I mean, you're obviously more than welcome to do that, but opening it up to allow the restaurant can help bolster someone's business plan, because generally speaking, breweries by themselves are not a financially stable business plan in the long run. Um, many of them have closed, especially the smaller ones, because it is very hard to just make money off of your beer, even if you're offering growlers, which are the big huge jugs that you can go take, you fill onsite and then go take for consumption onsite. Um, being able to have that restaurant component, whether it's some other restaurant that partners with them that comes in and they, or food trucks or however else they're producing that, or being able to have other companies and other local businesses that they're bolstering, it fosters a sense of community as well. Um,
Sam, I think, I think you're, you're talking about food, other food uses. We're talking about whether or not the alcohol that's being served has to be produced onsite.
No, I'm, I am talking about that as well. Um, I'm saying that the business model of just being able to sell their own product onsite and not being able to have, say, say they only produce beer and they wanna be able to offer something for people who are gluten-free, because they can't produce gluten-free beer on their site and get it certified, then they would be able to have, they would have to be able to produce or sell a cider to be inclusive to everybody. Um, I think that we should leave it open versus explicitly prohibiting or, or, um, limiting them to only what they make onsite. Again, it is ultimately up to what you would like to do, but I wouldn't encourage us not to limit them.
Well, this says, the question, the clause I'm questioning is with the retail sales, not, you know, other sales. I'm, I'm thinking this is takeout of only those alcoholic beverages produced at that facility for consumption on or off the premises, or consumption on. When I buy a beer at a bar, is that a retail sale?
I believe it is. So I would have to defer to the attorneys to look up whatever is, however the licenses are structured and what's that calling, but, um, I think that, I feel like that that's what the language I was always familiar with, is retail sales, um, in conjunction with a restaurant.
I mean, like, like I represent Treehouse up the road in Tewksbury, and you can take their beer off premises, you can walk right in and buy it in a vending machine now, or you can order ahead and get cases, but if I stay and have a beer while you're loading the box, so I can carry it out, is that a retail sale? Or is that me consuming a food product or an alcoholic beverage at the bar? I don't know the answer to that.
Maybe there's, uh, shut.
Bill, I see you have your hand raised.
Yes, hi, thanks. I've been listening in, sorry, still, um, just, um, Treehouse Brewery also has a retail component as well as pizza, as well as others. So they do have, it's also a golf course still, the one in Tewksbury, so.
They do in Tewksbury.
Um, if, for example, if Treehouse were to look at expanding and having a place in Wakefield, we don't wanna limit them to only have a certain part of their business. We want them, allow them to also have the gift shop slash locker room that they have in Tewksbury selling items as well as, um, any other, any other type of retail and food and beverage. So I don't, I don't know why we would try to limit that.
Great.
Additionally, to further support, um, what Mr. Spalding just said is that, um, think about people too who are sober and who wanna be able to hang out with their friends who go to breweries and they don't wanna be drinking alcohol. So if something like kombucha, which is technically non-alcoholic in most instances, um, is brewed at another location and then sold onsite here, whether, again, that's for consumption on premises or off premises, um, it just, I would encourage us not to have that clause.
I would agree with the onsite consumption. The offsite throws me where at one, at what point does it convert from being a beverage producer to essentially a liquor store? If Treehouse is selling its own stuff, plus if they don't make cider, a hard cider, a seltzer, et cetera.
For offsite consumption?
To offsite consumption, yeah. Onsite is one thing, but starting at kind of the retail operation, selling other, other products, other
And
I, I think we should limit that.
Through the chair, um, one thing that we could suggest is that, that's something that is left up to the decision of who the, the boarding, um, the board, the zoning board of appeals when they're reviewing it, and leave it open, because right now it looks like, when I, I Google what's a retail license for liquor in the state of Massachusetts, it's restaurants, hotels, clubs, taverns, um, general on premises, farmer's series pouring prem, permits, whatever that's for. Um, off-premise consumption, like a package store, grocery store, convenience store. So while some of it may come down to the specific type of license that they get, um, generally speaking, that definition of retail, I'm, I'm going to it suggests that we leave that a little bit more open.
It, it might be that state liquor laws actually define it, but I can't recall seeing a Massachusetts brewery sell another producer's products for offsite consumption. Other states I have seen that, but I don't recall seeing it here.
I don't, I'm only familiar with their operations and they don't do that. But I'm thinking to places like Alchemist up in Vermont, you're not gonna get anybody else over there.
So i- if we left it open to Sam's point, the state liquor laws might answer that for us, where.
I think what I think, sounds like we're like the distillery language around, the facilities may also include other uses such as a standard restaurant, bar, or live entertainment as permitted in the zoning district, and then omit the following section related to, with retail sales of only those alcoholic beverages produced at that facility for consumption on or off the premises will be omitted and left unaddressed.
And I'm back to striking it out, which is where I started. So there you go.
And through the chair too, I'm also, if this is something that anybody really wants me to fall down the rabbit hole on getting the specifics on, I'm happy to work with, um, the bylaw review committee. Just let me know.
I think Bill still has hand raised. Oh, sorry. Did, Bill, did you still have your hand raised, or was that from prior? Apologies if I missed it.
From prior, sorry, I'll figure out how to put it down.
All right, let's at least get through the use table. Um, so I'm at
Anything else with the industrial uses?
There is a but C, but that, I was waiting for, just an, I made a note to myself. But C section, whatever it is in section nine, uh, because the actual use regulations are in the text of section nine, they're, uh, it's, I, I believe if I remember, Brian, you wrote it, it says, you can do a self-storage in the overlay district, and there's two other districts I think you can do it in.
And we've stepped away
Sure, I'll look it up, no problem.
Um, for
Nine, nine and ten.
It looks like that the, uh, was there, there's other language that was in the base zoning that looks like it was removed. Just wanna double check that was, uh, intentional, specifically the lumberyard one. There was a, um, excluding junk or salvage at the end of that description that was originally in there.
So the way the overlay was written, it's allowed by right in the L I and I districts, and it's allowed by special permit in the self-storage overlay district.
I think the intent was that junk and storage yards were to be, talking about two different things, I'm sorry.
But that's why I just have notes across the board in the self-storage. Uh, I could change the L and the I. Uh, the, uh, the limited and the, and limited industrial and the industrial to yeses, cause that's what the bylaw says. And then the reference would be reduced to but C section 9.8 for allowed uses in the overlay district. But there's no overlay district in the columns there, right? That's the whole point. What, in order for me to finish the job, I would need self-storage overlay district, column B A. But that, that's why overlay districts are not put in the use table.
So Mark, see, when you do, this is Brian, since that was, like, I was involved in that amendment, so you're proposing that when you recertify not to have it in the table, but just a reference in the text that it's allowed in the overlay district?
Well, this is an unusual one, because instead of reserving the use exclusively to the overlay district, you're, the bylaw that I was given said it's also allowed by right
That's right.
In the L I and the I.
Correct.
I don't see any harm or foul in putting a yes in the L I or the I, but that kind of short changes the overlay district, so that reduces the no to the overlay district, which I can easily fix.
Okay.
Okay. This G seven. And then the accessory, are there accessory uses now?
Okay, so I had a question related to 10, the lumberyard contractor.
Go ahead.
All right, so in the original language, there was a excluding junk or salvage language, which I'm not sure if it was intentionally removed, because my, my reading is that the intent was that junk or salvage yards were not intended to be allowed by right.